WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904. For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equ權县立委， member FDIC.
This Fintress County Board of Commission is called to order. Please rise for the presentation of the colors by the Clark Range High School Color Guard. Have the pledge by Mr. Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have prayer by Commissioner Jeff Green.
Let's pray. Father God in heaven, we come to you this evening, Father, and thank you for the opportunity you have provided us to serve this great county in which we live. Father, I pray that the business that's taking place here tonight will be done in a manner to be pleasing unto you. Pray that the decisions that are made will be the correct ones for the benefit of the county and for the folks that live here. May we, may all we do be done in a manner to be pleasing to you. We ask these things in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Be seated. We'll have roll call by Marilyn Stevens, our county court clerk.
Jimmy Johnson.
Here.
Justin Mewon.
Here.
J.P. Reagan.
Here.
Captain Ferguson.
Here.
Benny Hughes.
Here.
Donald Williams.
Here.
Lester Dooty.
Here.
Jeff Green.
Here.
Larry Cooper.
Not here.
White Matthews.
Here.
We do have a quorum. First thing on our agenda is approval of the county commission minutes from July the 23rd's regular meeting and July the 25th's reconvene meeting. Does everybody have a chance to look over the minutes? Any corrections or additions?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
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 Wade.
Four.
Motion passes. Before we go into the regular agenda, we've got two or three announcements. Number one, for those who are sitting in the courtroom and can see the inscription above the commission here, we appreciate Mike Wood. Is Mike, would you raise your hand back there for putting that up? And in addition to that, putting Fintress County established in 1823. Mike also was the one who did the letter in front of the courthouse that says, "In God we trust." So we appreciate Mike, his hard work, his creativity, and his dedication. Thank you. We've got an announcement from the Palmaugh Community Shelter. They will be hosting a public meeting on Wednesday, August the 22nd at 5:00. And the purpose of this is to receive input from the community on organizing a committee that will oversee events and the operation of that Palmaugh Shelter. So anyone who's interested in helping with that, anybody around the Palmaugh community, please be in attendance. Amanda Maynard, I want to get you to stand up or come up real quickly if you would. We just got news today. Everybody knows that we had applied for an LPRF Parks and Recreation Grant in amount of $450,000. And Governor Haslam and TDEC made the announcement today that Fintress County did get that grant. And they outlined in it that it is for the development of one baseball field with a fence, grading for a soccer field, restrooms and a maintenance room, concession stand, parking, and street lighting. And that will be phase one of that big project. So Amanda, thank you for writing that grant. Do you want to say anything about it?
Congratulations. This was a huge endeavor for the council, the commission, excuse me, the commission here as well as the citizens. So I'm just very proud that we were funded, very proud. Those grants, I looked, there was 51 across the state for parks. There was 15 for trails. So I mean, we're very fortunate because there was well over 150 applications submitted. So just, you know, they only funded about a third. So that's a good success rate for us.
Thank you, Amanda.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we're very lucky to have Amanda as our grant writer. For the last four years, she's brought in several million dollars to Fintress County through her grants and her diligence. And, you know, we've got some others that we'll be working on, we'll be talking about tonight. Next on the agenda is consideration of approval of notary applications. We have Teresa Tompkins, Katie Brooks, Helen Cook, Kimberly A. Rocha, Kimberly M. Martin, and Stephen G. Williams.
I think a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is, we've got some service plaques to three of our outgoing commissioners, and I'd like to get them down in the front and maybe get a picture for the paper. Donald Williams, Jeff Green, and J.P. Reagan. And each one says, presented to and then their name. On this 20th day of August 2018, in grateful appreciation for your many years of dedication to Fintress County. And Donald, this is third district commissioner. Jeff is fourth district commissioner. And J.P. is second district commissioner. Okay, next on the agenda is a consideration of approval of the Fintress County Library Board members and their terms. You've got those in your packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
941 Absent, motion passes. Next is consideration of approval of out of service surplus property from the Fintress County Sheriff's Department. And again, you've got that list there in your packet.
Mr. Cross.
Yes.
Like we stated in the work session, the sheriff is having a mandatory meeting with all the officers and some of the air board personnel and related to Fair Week, and he could not be here. There is an additional vehicle that will need to be added. I think a 2006 Nissan Titan that was seized through the drug fund and has been forfeited. Proper legal paperwork is in place for that, and he asked could it be added to the list? You will provide a VIN number prior to it actually going to the auction, and we'll update that.
Okay, please add that 2006 Nissan Titan to the list.
So do we need a motion to declare him surplus?
Yes.
So move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
These law enforcement agents too.
Yes. Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is consideration of approval of out of service surplus property from the Fintress County Fire Department. And again, you do have that list.
I move to declare him surplus.
Move to declare it surplus. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes. Next is a memorandum of understanding and agreement regarding payment of a specialized training cost to candidates at Volunteer State Community College Paramedic Program. Micah Dunford, Ambulance Director, you want to speak to that, please?
Like I said in the work session, in order to get people here, we're going to have to train. We've set aside the money in our budget this year of training, and this agreement should fall well under that budget. The way this agreement works is you pay us back by working for us. So it's a two-year agreement. Every six months, it falls down to 75% and 50%, 25, and then after two years, it will be paid off. So I think it's a pretty good deal. We get some people and they get some education, so.
Thank you, Micah. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
941 Absent, motion passes. Next, and I say Amanda that you.
I'm taking my smile.
Consideration of a resolution authorizing the filing of a community development block grant, CDBG application for the coming year.
As you know, since we've closed out the Palmaugh Grant, we are eligible to apply for a new redevelopment block grant in 2019. Those applications aren't due until February, but it's always a good idea to get a head start. So we had our public hearing earlier tonight. We went back and forth between applying for four-wheel drive ambulances or a new fire truck. And I believe the consensus was the fire truck was more important at this time, not that four-wheel drive ambulances aren't. But at this time, our pumper is down and has been down for two years, so it would be a good idea for us to use our CDBG funding for a new fire pumper. So the maximum amount of the grant we can apply for is 315,000, and then our match to get 315 is 43,000. So you might notice that is up a little bit from years past, but that just means our tax base is doing better in the, you know, the recent years.
Right.
This fire truck can be used countywide.
Yes, that is correct.
To any structure fire that we have. And then again, when they look at home insurance, that's part of the things that they factor in. So if we can get a pumper truck back up and running, that's just going to help. And again, we're kind of looking at everything we thought to be countywide to benefit the most people that we would try to go after that grant for the pipeline.
And like I said earlier, if you remember, we got new ambulances through a CDBG grant in 2014. So I'm afraid it might be just a little too soon for us to apply for ambulances again, so.
In the ambulance service budget, we did okay for them to buy an SUV, so they do have a four-wheel drive if somebody needs that.
Any other comments or questions? I make a motion to authorize it. Okay, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
That is to pursue the fire truck purchase.
Yes. Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Amanda.
Consideration of a resolution requiring county commissioners to attend the regularly scheduled meetings before they can receive payment for that meeting. And Commissioner Green, you wanted to speak to that?
Yeah, I'm the one that brought this up, so I'll kind of tell you what's on my mind about it. The way, the way things are structured at present time, you know, I was elected four years ago, and I would have never had to come to a meeting and sit here and got my pay, you know, every month. And I just think that's something, that's a loophole there that we need to close. And what I have suggested is each commissioner have one excused meeting per year and, you know, still get their pay for that, because there is a lot of work that goes on. You know, probably for every hour we sit here, we're, you know, I know many of us are spending 15 or 20, you know, somewhere else working on county business, but I think, you know, things do come up. You know, there are deaths in the family, people are sick, you know, things happen. So what I have proposed is that, you know, the commissioners are allowed to miss one per year. After that, they miss their month's pay, you know, for missing a meeting.
I'll take it then that that wasn't.
Well, can I make the motion since I'm kind of.
Yep.
The brain's well. Well, I move to that effect. I'll say it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, we need to clarify what is a meeting.
Yeah, because there's some wording in here that we need to look at.
The regularly scheduled monthly commission meeting.
Not to include special calls, not to include reconvene or recessed meetings.
Right, the regularly scheduled commission meeting.
Not to include committees or work sessions.
Only include the regular scheduled commission meeting.
So this is a draft that we have, because that actually, in the draft, it says reconvene, special call meeting. So we need to strike that from.
Benny, you had a question?
I'd like to interject with the exception of the extended illness into that wording.
I don't know. I guess I'm a little torn on that because we're getting paid for service and the services come into the meeting, so maybe the, you have the one exception, you know, you want excuse meeting, and then that.
And that is going to be, I assume, per fiscal year.
Per fiscal year.
Not per four years, just per fiscal year.
Yeah.
So I'll one through two thirty.
Is everybody clear then?
I do have one further consideration. Whose responsibility will it fall under to notify the commissioner and, I guess, the finance department?
Do what?
Amanda does her time.
Becky, does HR want to volunteer for that?
I can notify finance when they don't make the meetings.
Yeah.
Because I think that language may need to be included because often times that's what's missing in a lot of our documentation.
Right. So that there is adequate documentation that it did occur. Jeff, do you want to restate your motion? And we'll see if anybody wants to amend it.
Okay. I move that county commissioners are required to attend the regularly scheduled county commission meetings in order to receive their pay, with the exception of one absence per year for any reason whatsoever. And that the human resource department keep track of commissioner attendance and notify finance in the event someone has not been here and should have, and they don't get their pay. I'll say it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
We made an amendment to it, the draft, the one, is it the fourth paragraph down? The one that requires that all commissioners attend all the meetings of the commission, both regularly scheduled, monthly meetings, reconvene, special, they would go strike that last part of that.
And I'm good with that.
Was that a amendment or just a correction? Clarification?
That wasn't even included in my motion, so, you know. Motion I've made, if you won't pay, you got to show up at the meeting. Yeah, it's, you know, pretty simple.
Any other questions? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Against.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Okay, motion passes. Next thing on the agenda is a consideration of moving the finance department from the Reagan Building to the Fintress County Courthouse. Kimberly, do you want to explain that?
Yeah, we've been talking about this for a little while. The Historical Society had come to, had actually presented, Mike, asking that the county may be able to find him a space for their, they have a lot of artifacts and museum items that would be awesome if we had on display. Well, we didn't have anything to offer. But with the New Justice Center, a lot of the offices in the courthouse became vacant. And once we looked at the space and what we had, we came up with the idea of perhaps relocating the finance department into the courthouse. That way, we would have all the services under one roof, which would serve the county seems like better and the employees. So we looked at that, and we're actually able to accommodate the finance office over here with very, without a lot of impact to the county in doing so. And then that actually opens up the lower level of the Reagan Building, which will be a lot more accessible to the public. And at that point in time, we can use part of the building for county archives, which we do have to maintain, that's required by law. And then the other side can actually be used for the Historical Society. And the Historical Society can take that and hopefully convert that into a museum. And again, that's just another part, another step in what we're trying to do to move, you know, to revitalize Jamestown, Fintress County, you know, to celebrate our history and, you know, to continue forward. So again, it looks like a very positive thing that we can do for the county. We can make services better, and then we can actually celebrate the Historical Society and the archives. So it looks like a win-win situation. So again, we've worked out a lot of the details, and not going to be a lot of impact. The sheriff has been real good with trustees to let them, you know, come over and do some work. So we'll continue to, you know, work with the sheriff and be able to do some things like that. So that's our plan.
Any questions? Step one is to vote for moving the finance department into the courthouse. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just one other thing I did want to mention. The only occupied office, well, it wasn't actually occupied. We did have a space here that we had delegated for the ID board to use if needed. We are still going to accommodate the ID board in any aspect. They have full use of the meet, the small courtroom for all their monthly meetings or any other meetings there. We have designated an area in the courthouse for storage for their file cabinets that'll be secure meetings. If he has, you know, if there's potential for any kind of business to come here, we will find a meeting, there will be, that will be provided. We will go out of our way to accommodate them. We thought the office might, you know, be used a lot, but it's just, it tends to not, it's more computer oriented and things like that. So the physical office space, we think we can better serve the county by using that for the finance office. And then, like I said, we'll accommodate the ID board in any meetings, you know, we'll do whatever we can, because we still, we are very supportive of industry development and economic development in the county. So we'll work in every way to accommodate that. Yes, we'll, yeah.
Any other comments? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes. I don't think so. Step two, consideration of allowing the Fintress County Historical Society to occupy the Reagan Building located at 103A Smith Street. So Kim is already discussed, do what?
I got a motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Say.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
J.P.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
941 Absent, motion passes. Then the last part of that whole deal is a discussion of the use and occupancy agreement for the Fintress County Historical Society. Leslie?
Just briefly, Mr. Cross and commissioners, the president of the Historical Society, Mr. Tom Potter, is also one of our esteemed bar members here in Fintress County, legal counsel for several. He and I have had some preliminary discussions. I think they had a meeting of the Historical Society and have some, perhaps a list of things that need to be considered. What we've initially discussed is basically with our use, our really simple use and occupancy agreement that is fluid, because once they're in the building, they may have things that come up where we may find things as we move finance over here that are, that are not known to everybody today. But I'm sure Mr. Potter can probably tell us, or someone from the Historical Society can kind of tell us what it is that they're looking for and what they need. And then you all can go from there with that, and whatever it is that you work out with them, an initial use and occupancy to get them in there. And then I'm sure that will need to be updated as we go.
Tom, would you like to address the commission or anybody from the Historical Society?
The FRS members of the commission, the Fintress County is off the side here, so very pleased, very honored that the folks have seen fit to allow us the use of this space. And I can promise you that it will be used wisely and properly. What we're looking for, of course, the building as I understand is not now ADA compliant. That will have to be done. And there will need to be ramps. There will need to be ramps for the steps and the stairs and bathrooms will have to be put right. There will be some modification of the inside of the buildings. I understand there are some temporary rooms or walls that may be moved about and I understand that the sheriff's department will make available talented trustees who will be able to do that at no expense to the county. We have funds for renovation materials, paint, carpet, flooring, such as that. We're not unlimited, but we have some money available for that, so. And we understand that will need to be done and that will be a benefit after we leave, whenever we do, that will be a benefit for the county that lives in there next. As far as renters insurance came up between me and this, we will, of course, Mr. Society will provide renters insurance to cover the items that we have in there that we will install as exhibits and archives, our own archives. Some of these items are irreplaceable. Some of these things were worn and decayed and never be found anywhere else under any circumstances. So we're willing to accept that burden of safeguarding these items. Office supplies, of course, will be our charge. Equipment such as computers, printers, copiers, office furniture, again, that's on us. And we'll have covered materials needed for renovation. Of course, telephone and internet service will be, will be on us. There are some things that just preliminarily we have noticed that need to be looked after. The front door of the building is a glass door, the glass is broken, need to be replaced. I mentioned the trustees. The term of the lease, however long it is, will probably outlive any of us, which, of course, will be a good thing. And I think it would be appropriate this time to point out that everything this commission does and everything the commission before it and before it has done and the commissions to come in the future, that's part of our history. That's part of Fentress County history. You folks are making history just by being here, just by acting in your capacities. And this needs to be recorded, it needs to be kept for people who will come after us. And we don't know what they'll be looking for, but we know they'll be looking. And this, we have here the opportunity to put this right, once and for all, and if you will, to catch up with other counties and other towns who have done this and have done a lot with their museums. The, back to our list here, there are two restroom facilities on the ground floor. One is larger than the other and has a shower. It's all, I understand, in there, it will have to be made handicap accessible, that's on the left side, the archive side, if you will. The other side, which will be more of the Historical Society, there's a small bathroom and I understand it is very small. And it too will have to be made equipped properly for the ADA requirements. And that, the smaller bathroom will be, will not be public use. Perhaps someone knows some research in there that may be more appropriate for them, but the larger bathroom will be a public bathroom. And it does need to be ADA compliant. There's some lettering on the windows, not a large deal, I think a scrape or razor blade will take that out. Some appropriate lettering might be, might be considered to identify the, that part of the building as being of Fentress County Archives. We have, we have a logo on the sign presently at the old guard office in the outer bedroom occupied now, which might, which might fit well out there. But there is a benefit and as has been mentioned before, we're going to have all of these facilities, the Chamber of Commerce and the courthouse and now the archives and the Historical Commission, this will all be located in a center here in Jamestown. It's going to be an attraction, it's going to draw people, people are going to come. And when they do, the idea is to come to Fentress County, spend your money, have a good time, go home and tell everybody, you got, you got to go there. And this, having this Historical Society over here and the museum will be part of that. It's going to be a great thing, a small thing, but yet great. Are there any, do you want to have any questions?
Tom, let me jump in there and say, I know that probably doesn't mean a whole lot, but I do think it's necessary to mention on the front end to the commissioners that with the museum, there will be a bookstore. It doesn't generate, it doesn't generate a tremendous amount of revenue on its own, but it is, there will be some transactions that take place there and that you all will be responsible for all of that.
Exactly. We do have a book sales at the present location, but it's not local, it's not essential. It doesn't look like it loses. And at least with this facility, we can have something that looks more appropriate that people, that will draw people in and will buy these books. And it's, again, these are books of Fentress County history. And believe it or not, they do sell. So yes, that's exactly right. We want to have a reception area, a place for staff. We have an increased presence at the museum. Now we're limited just to weekends, limited hours on weekends, but if, once we're down here, we're going to have a bigger demand. People are going to come see it, but we're going to have to be there.
I agree a hundred percent, absolutely.
I think that's about, about the, about the rest here, just the term of the lease is kind of, kind of up in the air. And who knows if, we don't know how long the building will last. So we would ask for, do a consideration for a considerable length of the lease and we promise we'll be good tenants, we'll take care of the place and we'll do right with you guys. Anything else?
Think that's it? Do I got a question or a comment?
Thank y'all very much.
Thomas, thank you very much. No secret, you need to vote or anything here except it'll be a work in progress.
That's up to you all. I mean, that... The building committee may want to meet with them and come up with some definitive terms and bring them back, but for tonight, I think you at least need to let them know that, like you've already done, that they're there, our insurance does cover the building essentially. One thing we didn't talk about was electricity because that, if they do begin to move over there pretty quickly, as Kim correctly identified, we are required by state law to maintain an archives. I don't know that you can split the building into two. Phone, you can, obviously, but as far as electric is concerned, I think it is all going to the lower floors. The lower floors are all one unit.
Right.
So basically, y'all probably need to decide that upfront.
I think the building committee has already met on that and decided we would love the electric.
And I'm not sure if there's, you know, what are these other topics that you all might knock out tonight or not? It's up to you all.
I'm okay with once, because we can't do a whole lot until we actually get finance moved out, but once we get closer to that being done, then we'll set a building committee meeting along with the Historical Society and Archives and then start that process, kind of put things together, you know, and I think we'll know better, more, once that building kind of opens up a little bit. So I think we can just kind of hash out the details.
Kim, do they have a date? Sixty days, ninety days?
We're kind of at the mercy, we have to get the phone lines put in first and then we'll have to get local government to do some computer stuff, so we're kind of at the mercy of waiting on that to be done. Once that's done, it should be relatively quick. There's a few like desks that we've got to get so that we're factoring that in, you know, we want to get, make sure that whoever supplies the desk can meet those deadlines as well because we want to try to get everything done as quickly and efficiently as we can because we don't want to do anything to slow down county, the government, or, you know, hinder anything on that level. So we're going to try to get all that done quickly.
One of the things we need, especially, is the term of the lease regarding to build on work in the building, et cetera. Maybe that's something if you could determine to mine, that would really be helpful. And that may also help them with their getting renters insurance. They're going to need to know what a term for that would be.
Fifty years? Fifty years?
Would fifty-year be fine?
We'll make that...
Motion as such?
We have a motion to make the agreement for fifty years.
Ninety-nine year lease. We better than we can do with government.
Do I have a second?
Why not ninety-nine years?
The motion for fifty-year agreement, do I have a second?
I'll second. Jeff won't say something, so let's go and do the discussion.
Second before he gets a chance. Motion and a second, any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote.
Jimmy, do you know anything?
I think with, I'm going to say, I've got eleven days left. With the fifty-year lease, we need a buyout clause, you know, that if, if, you know, if for some reason, Fentress County Government had to have that building, we could pay them, you know, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, two thousand, something to get the building back. You know, I, you know, that's just my thoughts. Not thinking you all will have it for fifty years, you know, but, and certainly if the Fentress County Government ever had to have it back.
One. Benny.
Pardon? It's what I'll take.
Is that an amendment?
Oh, you added amendment to it?
If you're going to a buyout clause, why not deal with a ninety-nine year lease? Right. I mean, that way they're protected for ninety-nine years and if good things happen, you can just buy them out.
I also think if you do a buyout clause, you're going to need a longer term of notice. Say that this building flooded and you needed something immediately, I don't think you would knock on their door and say, hang it out, even if you give them twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. I think you'd have to have that in a manner of a six months or a year-long notification process because what they have, as Tom alluded to, is priceless things. It's not like you can just pack them up and...
Other than rushing to a motion here tonight, I think our council, along with their council, you know, needs to work on an agreement and bring it back to us to, you know, or the next commission to approve it.
Just a preliminary agreement, maybe for the twenty-seventh...
Vinnie, would you want to withdraw your motion?
I do withdraw.
Just deal strictly with the terms...
End the council consultation.
The term of the use and occupancy, not necessarily the thing that the building committee will hash out later on, but I do think they're going to get insurance and they'll start looking at phone lines. They're going to need to know a little bit about, it's going to be a year we're going to let them use it.
It won't be long, you know, like whatever it is, but I think the Fentress County Government does need, need some protection.
Mr. Potter, do you think the next seven days, you and I can at least deal with the term of the use and occupancy?
I'm sorry. Step up. Again, please.
Do you think that between now and the twenty-seventh, when this meeting, we will reconvene, that we can have something just for the term of the use and occupancy lease agreement?
I'm sure we can, that's a...
Just a real basic, doesn't have anything to do with the actual term of use of the building, what's going to happen inside of it, but just for how long.
Right.
Is that fair enough?
One word from tonight.
Is that what you're coming back?
Yeah.
Over here.
Okay.
Mr. Giff.
So no action tonight. That's everything on our agenda tonight. Anybody from the audience have anything to add? No, I need a motion to recess because we'll have a reconvene meeting next Monday night, the purpose which will be to pass the budget and set the tax rate.
Make a motion to recess.
Motion to recess, do I have a second? Motion and a second.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fentress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.